With the secretary, please call the roll.
Kate Bennett.
Bobby, are we good to roll?
Yes, sir.
David Boggs.
President.
Patty Cross.
Here.
Keith Lee.
Here.
Paul Looney.
Here.
Tim Lusher. Timothy Lusher.
Eden.
Tim Nichol.
Now I'm on you. I'm here.
Hi, Tim Carroll.
President.
Russell Wright. Sharon Jackson.
Here.
Coram of None.
Yeah, I'm here as well, Charles Stewart.
Oh, hi, Charles. Coram of Ten.
Okay, so Kate is the only one we're missing?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe she should have joined us later.
Yeah.
At a quorum. Everyone received their copy of the minutes if so, taking a motion on approval of September 10 meeting. Motion to approve.
Second.
Move property second. Discussion on the motion. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion care. There are letter ten of motion to pay the bill in the, as amended, new agenda.
Tell me. Second.
Move property second. Discussion on the motion. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote aye please.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Hearing none, motion care. Do we have any reports from officers? Are they reports in standing committee? Reports from special select committee. That'd be the steering committee for the development of the, of the new business plan. I'm sure as many of you know, I have seen, we have gotten the appointments from both fiscal court and most recently from the city commission. Fiscal Court representative of Mr. J.W. Blackburn. The city commission's representative of this is Mr. Eric Wiseman. And so that completes us and so what you should have gotten by email is a copy of two letters that the chairman will be sending out, one to fiscal court, one to city commission, thanking them for identifying the participants for our steering committee. The second letter will go to individual appointees of the steering committee, welcoming them to the appointment and then outlining our first steps in terms of the things that we need to get done. The first two things being establishing an outline of what issues we need to address in the comprehensive plan and then secondly to draft a, to draft a RFP to see if we can identify a consultant to help with that in developing plans. You should have those drafts by email. If anybody wants to make any suggestions for improvement, you can do that by contacting Eric or Robert Hewitt. I will probably go down tomorrow about noon or a little bit after and cause those letters to be finalized, sign them, and then send them out. Questions from my colleagues? Don't hear any? Are there any special orders? I don't have any. Does anybody have anything special that I need to address? Don't hear any? We have no old business, so we'll ask the secretary to call the first item of new business. And Eric, I think at this point, after the secretary, I need you to talk about the special nature of the conversation that will come around under this agenda item.
In accordance with Articles Four and Eight of the Frankfurt zoning ordinance, Thomas Bond is requesting approval of a development plan for the property located at 772 Wilkinson Boulevard. The property is more particularly described as track two from the minor subdivision found in flat cabinet L, page 128. This is a city item.
Okay, now.
Thanks, Vicki.
Go ahead. Eric, go ahead.
Okay, so the item as advertised was for development plan approval for this project. We are, as it happens, still working with the applicant's design professionals on getting that development plan reviewed and ready for your, for your review. What we wanted to do this month, because this is a unique project, a unique land use within a planned district since we already had the item on the agenda. I spoke with the applicant's design professionals and talked to Ed to make sure we could do this. But we wanted to come to you guys and just kind of have a brief discussion about the scope of the project, the unique nature of the land use, and just kind of share some information and prepare you for what we'll be bringing back to you, we hope, in November for final approval and just to make sure that everybody's comfort level moving forward is satisfactory. So I've described the land use in the brief staff report I shared with you all. It's a, it's a combination, commercial use with a cafe slash concession area, some smallish type cabins, if you will, meant for Airbnb rentals for tourists, probably associated with the Bourbon Trail, things of that nature, and then a caretaker's residence on site. So we'll have four structures, two small cabins, one single family home, and then a sort of main structure, I guess, if you will, this, this commercial structure. The property is owned planned commercial. A large portion of it is in the flood zone. A portion of it currently is actually in the floodway, so we're working with their engineer to process a Lomar F to get that adjusted based upon some fill that has previously been placed in the, in the property. And so that, that review is ongoing. That's one of the unique things about this property is because of its relation to the river, those questions. But we've had an open dialogue with Division of Water since we began discussions with the applicants about this project. So it's a, it's a unique land use and happening within a planned district, I think, is an appropriate way because we can then bring this through the planning commission to really take a look at what's not going to develop in the typical way we see commercial developments that you're tend, that you're going to be used to looking at on a development plan. So one of the things we want to do, and then I'll turn it over to the applicants, otherwise you can, you can ask some questions of me, is to just kind of discuss how this is a mixture of commercial uses and this one residential use, which generally in the planned commercial district, it describes ancillary residential uses being a potentially acceptable land use. And so that's part of the thing, we wanted to make sure that the commission didn't see any issues with the way the uses will be divided up on this as we continue to work through the development plan. So, you know, staff doesn't have any issues with it. I think it's an appropriate assortment of uses within the planned commercial district. As you all are familiar, planned districts by their very nature are meant to be flexible with land uses and that's the whole reason that we bring these things in these districts to the commission so that we can offer developers more flexibility while giving you all a little more opportunity in the public light to review the specifics of those plans as they're moved forward. So with that being said, I'll take any questions you guys might have of me.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Go ahead.
When we, when you zone something like this, what, what kind of leeway do we give the applicant to make changes? You know, when it goes this way, a lot of times when we zone something, it's, you're kind of stuck with that zoning. You know, it can be a variety of things in that zone classification. When we talk about mixed use, do we approve it and then they can, they can really alter that or does it have to be very, very strict to what they, you know, what they present as far as the plan?
Yeah, well, as you all know, typically when, when the property would be zoned, a planned district, they would generally, you know, share with us the proposed uses and mixture uses. So we have that moving forward. Some of these districts in situations like this where the, the zone change or the zoning was identified a long time ago and it probably didn't consider this particular mixture of uses, but I think, you know, one of the, one of the things that, that helps us deal with this and that it's, I think, is helpful and that we already have to come back to you all for approval of development plan, so that gives you an opportunity to make that decision about whether that use is appropriate within that zone. I don't think you're, you're restricted by whatever may have been proposed many years ago when that was owned that way. You know, many times we'll try to get users when they do the zoning to kind of reference what uses, if any, they don't want in, in the zone because it's so wide open, but lacking any kind of specific restrictions that the original developer may have placed. And I think it really comes back to our, our decisions about whether it complies generally with the planned commercial district.
Okay, thank you.
One question.
Paul.
Yeah, Eric, this is an interesting mix of things. Probably the thing that stood out to me the most was the dog kennels. I, it seems, and I don't, I guess, I got several questions. One, that this tract and the tracks adjacent to it have the mixed use trail, the review trail along through there. Is that on a deed to easement or how is that trail through, through the lot?
Yeah, we, the city, I believe, has an access easement through these lots that contains the, the multi-
Do, do we have, I mean, what, what is, do we know what the layout of the, the buildings on the lot is yet or is that something still, you're still working with the applicant? The different buildings that are going to be put on there?
We're, the review is ongoing, so yeah, we do have a picture of that. We've gone through our kind of first set of review with the technical review team on that. I had considered sharing that with you, but since we weren't making any decisions this evening when I spoke with Ed, we kind of decided to make sure we didn't muddy the waters. I didn't want to share the draft development plan and have you all look over it and possibly comment on something that isn't really the final, necessarily the final layout. I don't know how else to put it, but, but yeah, I'll just say that generally the commercial building, actually, I can probably share my screen and I've got a shot of the property on street view. Hold on just a sec. So can everybody see my screen right now?
Yeah. I can see it.
There we go. All right. So this is the property. There's the Ken Byrnes building. I'll share this interest and just to generally describe what we're, we're looking at now. Immediately to the right would be where the general parking area for the commercial space is going per the draft plan so far. And then in this general area, we would have the, the larger commercial structure. And as we come down, and you'll notice this shelf starts, starts dipping towards the rear and, and to the right. As we get to the edge of that shelf, we'll see the two cabins on this side and then behind all this, the back end of that shelf is where the, the caretaker's residence is cited on our current draft of the plan.
When you put a single family residence on there, does it have to go on its own? Is there a subdivided lot for that or is it still part of the same tract?
As proposed, it would all be on the same track because it's all under single ownership. There's no, they don't have a reason to have to subdivide it for our rules.
I guess one of the things that just is interesting and or concerning is the, the kennel aspect and the noise that would be, you know, having people on the trail or the houses and people there and generated from that and the disturbance, I guess, I don't know how to rectify if they're all, if it's somebody that's working for the business that's in the house, then I guess they can't complain about that noise. That was a concern I had is if it got sold off to somebody else, then you'd have a noise complaint issue. It's a, they seem to be interested in having a cafe above a dog kennel. Seems like an odd combination of things, but. Do we know the tract in the north is industrial, correct?
Yes.
Uh, yes. So the, my understanding is that the caretaker's home, the intention is that it would be the owners and or a hired caretaker that would stay in that home?
Anything else, Paul? There's noise in the background and I can't figure out what that is.
I, I don't have anything else. It just, it's an odd combination. It seems potentially problematic, but I can't put my finger on how exactly other than the, the noise that the dogs and the other stuff, noise and smell, I guess, from the kennels and then the other potential uses.
Yeah. That might be something we could have the applicant or their folks kind of address more-
Well, Mr. Jones might be able to address that when he has an opportunity to speak. Does any other commissioner have a question?
Eric, how much property is in the floodway?
Currently drafted, virtually all the property is in the flood zone and a pretty large portion is in the floodway. But that, that's a mapping situation that we, we expect to get corrected following the study that Mr. is doing based upon the elevations that we actually see out there. I think that was, to me, a mapping error that occurred in the mapping a few years ago that I guess wasn't addressed.
Okay. Does any other commissioner have a question?
I have a question. Is that, was that a flood, was that a fill area a few years ago? Me, that area, was that a fill?
I believe so. The engineer may be able to explain more about when that fill occurred, but yeah, that was a fill activity that occurred.
Yeah, that, that land was filled. The transportation cabinet did a road project 2014, 2015, and excess fill for that project was, was put on that lot at the time by the contractor.
Last question. If, if there aren't any other questions, I think Mr. Jones is with us to talk about the project. Mr. Jones, you have comments?
Chairman Jackson, actually, I'm just listening in.
Well, Mr. Jones is back, it's back to you again.
No, Chairman Jackson, I'm just listening in. I'm not representing the applicant at this meeting.
Oh, okay. Russell? We can't, yeah, we can't hear you.
Oh, Doug is with us. Somewhere.
Maybe we could touch base with Mr. Rippey and find out if he can- See if he can fix it, Mr. Rippey.
No.
He can fix it. Okay. Well, Russ, is your, is your question critical?
Does Mr. Wright understand that we can't hear a word he's saying?
Oh, no, but can he maybe type it in the comment bar?
Oh, my God, now he's frozen.
Well, what do we, what do we do?
Russ, Bobby, you just texted me your mic issue and I just sent a chat out. Tried getting out of the meeting, getting back in and seeing if the mic-
I just did. Can you hear me still?
There he is.
That's great.
You got me? All right. Now you haven't got my picture, that's okay. My question was, the question was about the, about the kennels. Is that a commercial kennel? Is that, what, what is that? Is that going to be a, what, I kind of like Paul Looney, that's a little bit of an interesting thing there. What, what was that all about? I mean, you're going to have a kennels, you're going to have a food service and you're going to, it's, you know, I like to know about that.
You know, that's the question that's going to keep, yeah, we, we may actually allow the, the design professionals for the applicant to kind of give us a sense. I know Jen and Bob are on here. Jen may be able to explain exactly how this whole thing ties together in a, in a use sense, I think, in a better way than, than I'm going to be able to do it, if that's fine with you all.
Okay.
Okay, so can I, can I jump in here now?
Go ahead.
Can everyone can hear me, okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. So this project kind of comes as a very site-specific endeavor. You know, when we look at properties, we often look at them in terms of opportunities and constraints and this lot does have several constraints given the situation with the flood plain and the limitation that it has on the amount of site area. Also, the easement that cuts through the property to allow for the walk bike trail. So at the end of the day, in the, in the area of the site, which currently maps above the base, base flood elevation, we have less than an acre of area. And so the site is constrained in those, in those ways. However, it has these opportunities of the river and the walk bike trail and a developer who's coming with a, a, a unique perspective of how they can do something with tying into recreational ideas of walking and biking on that trail, connecting to the river, connecting to the adjacency to downtown or Buffalo Trace with potential visitors who would use the guest cabins. And the kennel is really, like all of the components of the site plan, is conceptualized as a, a limited intensity component. So we're talking about, you know, maybe eight or maybe maximum of 10 dogs that would stay at a time. It could be a daytime doggy play daycare situation for people who are taking, who have dogs at home and they're working downtown and they drop them off and they do for the day. Or it could be an amenity for travelers who are traveling with their animals and, with their dogs on a sort of venture around this part, this region of the country, who would stay a night or two at a guest cabin and have dog facility for them to use because these are the folks who maybe are jogging and walking or biking on that trail with their dogs. And in terms, in terms of the concession part, which really isn't conceptualized as a cafe, it's really an idea that the lobby of the business that you would drop your dog off when you're going on your way to work could have soda fountain and, you know, kind of like a convenience shop where you could pick things up and that they might also pick up some commercial interest of people walking the trail on Saturday morning or something like that. The caretaker is imagined to be a full-time, you know, residence of the property who's managing both the gas cabins and the kennel. So it's a little micro business that would really kind of have this odd, this, this mixture of business components.
Are there questions from commissioners, please? If not, Ms. Williamson, can you tell us about the, the sinkholes that are on the property and, and how those would relate to the proposed uses that, that, that are there? And I think our ordinance kind of talked about construction not being permitted within 50 feet of the rim of a sinkhole or requiring a waiver and et cetera. You, you care to talk about that?
I'm looking and seeing Eric making some motion and also I'm going to open for the engineer to speak to- the engineer to speak to some of this. But I'm not sure what order to do this in Eric.
And that might be, that might be one of the, you know, that that Eric can't.
I was just going to jump.
Go ahead.
I was going to jump in, Mr. Jackson. I think, as you referenced sinkholes, I think the depression on the property you're thinking of is actually on the neighboring property, which is owned by tourism. To the best of my knowledge, we don't have any identified sinkholes on this property. And Bob, you can correct me if I'm right.
There aren't any sinkholes that I'm aware of. The construction for this site is limited to the, basically the footprint of the existing fill that's been referenced previously.
So that's at the top of the hill rather than going down on the backside?
Yes, so.
Yeah, that gets lower between that property and Douglas Willamette, right? There's a dip down in there, and it's, isn't that right? That where the low place you're talking about? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, Eric might put his picture back up there, but there was a, an overgrown area right there, just there, down that hill.
Yeah, it's real thick. Yeah, I walked down our trail, yeah, back over there.
I think, I think we're probably, I mean.
Back in this area where this clump of trees are.
Yeah. If it's not on this property, then it's inappropriate to talk.
You kind of see there the.
Are there other questions about the proposal? I mean, it's an information session, so, you know, we're not voting on anything. So if you got questions?
Well, I mean, there's a pretty good hodgepodge of things in there. I mean, what all could we add in there? If you could put a dog kennel in there, I would think, you know, what any number of things might be added. I mean, it's, I don't have, I'm a dog lover, too. I know we have pets here and show up on the show every once in a while, but, the meeting, but I'm just, you know, it's a lot of different things going in there. And I suppose they're allowed, but they appear to be. But I don't, do we have any, Eric, do we have any other properties in this area that are that diverse? And what we have, it's allowed on them?
I mean, we have obviously downtown, this is a fairly unique animal. In terms of the kennels, I will, oops, turn my mic off. The kennels are, all use were approved in a planned commercial district at the Tin Wolf Inn there off of Holm Street just a couple of years ago. Beyond that, I mean, planned commercial districts generally allow a wide variety of commercial uses and, as I said, residential uses. So, yeah, this, like I said, this is why we wanted to kind of have a talk about it and try to talk through some sense of understanding of exactly how these things relate to one another. And I think Jen did a lot better job than I did of explaining the concept and how the different pieces and parts, which would otherwise sound like entirely different entities, are kind of sort of part of the same, same.
All right, thanks.
Keith, did I see your finger? Okay.
Yes, sir. Mr. Wright, that kind of goes back to my first question. And I think we run in that as a planning and zoning group. You know, you approve some of this zoning. It could be, once it's proved, it can be sold tomorrow, and a lot of things can be changed. It's kind of the nature of the beast, really. It's, you know, when we, when we set this up, you know, dog kennel one day, liquor store the next, you know, it's, if it fits that criteria of it, there's really not much we can do about it. They can show us everything we want, and everything looks good, and we can make all the recommendations and notes we want to. But when the property's sold, it can be, if it stays in that type of scope, there's really not much you can do about that. And that's just, that's planning and zoning, unfortunately.
I know. That's what it is. I appreciate that. Thank you. Thanks.
And now, Mr. Logan, you might expound upon that. But once we do a development plan, while we don't say you gotta have a bagleys or CVS or whatever, and it changed from CVS to Green, to some other drugstore, if the use change, it has come back to us, doesn't it?
Mr. Chairman, in a planned district like this, you set out what's possible and what is there. If there is a substantial change, we always have required them to come back for that amendment. So if they want to change this cafe into an oriental restaurant to be adjacent to the dog kennel, you have a chance to take a look at it.
Well, yeah, that's, thank you, sir. That kind of gets at some of that. But now, also, I need to find out just my own edification. If I've got, if there's a dog kennel and a cafe or whatever kind of eatery is being proposed, isn't there a major decision that has to be made by the health department as to whether or not those two things can coexist, particularly since the eatery, health-related issues are there?
I mean, certainly for any food service, they'd have to satisfy the health department's requirements. I don't know that those things are going to cohabitate in the same space. I think the plan would be that they're separate uses contained within one structure. And to the degree that this, you know, Jim's reference concessions, and to the degree that becomes actual food service versus food products for sale will also alter, you know, the degree to which the health department has a role in regulating the use there.
But we'll know that, we'll know that once the development plan itself is presented to the planning commission with formal review and action, correct? As to whether it's just, you know, you go down the frozen food aisle and pick out fish, take it home and cook it, as compared to whether it's a prepared food item that you're purchasing.
I believe so, even to the degree that, yeah.
Eric, will they also?
I think we'll obviously try to get the best, the most clear idea of exactly what that's going to be as part of the development.
Eric, will there also be something that's going to address runoff, pollution, and sewage treatment with regard to this development? So that we know there's enough sewage capacity to handle this stuff?
Absolutely, as part of our.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That will be presented to the development plan, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
Eric or Sharon, I don't, the, it really is a, like, there'll be coolers that you can get a bottled soda in or a bag of chips. We're not having, there's not a commercial kitchen component to this project.
Hey, I don't, I don't see any other hands.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Looney, I lost you, but.
Oh, you're good.
The, the kennels, are they, are we talking about primarily indoor with or outdoor? I mean, and with their proximity, I'm just curious, are you going to have a bunch of dogs in fenced areas right back by the trail? Or is this more, they're going to be indoor and periodically go out to use restroom? Or is that finalized yet?
We, we are still, we're still working on this, but it is, it is conceptualized as indoor kenneling with an outdoor play yard. So dogs, we're not managing a lot of dogs in this project, and dogs will be taken out individually or in groups as they get along well. And we have an area where the play yard is identified on the site plan that the staff is reviewing. And it's not closer to the walk bike trail. It's not closer than 100 feet from that trail. I don't know if you heard me. Okay.
I did. Thank you. Yes.
Okay, other questions? We're getting ready to shut it down.
Actually, Sharon, I've got one, one quick question with regards to something that been just addressed. The proximity of the kennels, and I think that's what we're all concerned about, is the kennels, to that walk bike trail. Yeah, it's hard to make a lot of comments since we haven't seen the development plan yet, but part of that plan, is there some sort of safety element to it, effectively protecting the walk bike trail or anybody on it, therefore the neighbors across the street, because we're going into a subdivision. And we're not assuming that any dog is going to be aggressive, but these are good dogs. They're going to be essentially traveling through the town. And I think there is a element that would be concerning if I personally lived next to this kennel. That on paper sounds good, but I would want to be, I would at least want to know that myself, my family, the people walking behind, the people utilizing the trail, et cetera, there was something in place, that this was just not a picket fence, and, you know, a dog could leap over. And with that, how does that fit up to the makeup of the line of sight from Wilkinson Boulevard as well? So I guess the question is, what, what safety precautions are taken in place if this is an outdoor component of this dog kennel?
I'm not sure, Eric, do you want me to, do you want me to address that? I'm not sure if I can fully address it, but.
Well, I'll jump in a little bit, Jen, and maybe, you know, if we know that's a question going in to address exactly what that facility is going to look like, I think that's something in terms of showing, you know, a fencing tight and a little more detail in the development plan for what that component is going to look like. That's certainly something that's doable, so that when we come back to you all, you can get a better comfort level for where that's going, what it's going to look like, and how secure that situation is going to be. That's.
Yeah, and the intention is to have a defined area where, a perimeter on it.
Okay. I would like to see that when it comes back, if that's possible, please.
Has there been any sort of study, or what, how do you get the idea that there would be a demand for that number of possible, up to 10 dogs, you say, or kennels? I mean, how, has there been any, any study or research or any other basis for saying, well, we think this is warranted and needed, given the future development of this property? I mean.
I'm not familiar with the marketing research that the developer came to get this now.
I'd like to say that as a person who travels and, and likes to take the little hairy child, such a place would be welcomed for us. I mean, there's, there's not a lot of opportunities when you travel, if you're not going to leave them in the hotel room when you want to go out to dinner or something like that, that there's a spot to leave them. So I think there would be a market.
Awesome. I can, I'm sorry, Patty, go ahead.
Go ahead. It's okay.
No, I was just going to, I guess, comment on your comment, that I agree that from, I think it's a viable business market, and there's definitely a need for travelers to have room and boarding for their pets. I guess my concern and our concern is the planning and zoning commission is how does it impact, that's, those are travelers. We live here. And so how is it going to impact residents of Frankfurt, the people walking on that trail? You know, this is, I think a number of us walk that trail every morning, myself included. And I said, no, with your safety, but just the, is that going to impact the use of that trail? And I think those are all things that we need to address.
If not, the one person associated with this project, Mr. Pelosi there, has remained rather quiet. You have anything you need to tell us, Mr. Pelosi?
At this point, my role has been primarily focused on the technical aspects of how to make this work. And most of the questions seem to be more pertaining to this gentleman's business plan and in the nature of the business. So, you know, we, it's, without you all having an opportunity to see the site plan, I understand it is difficult to maybe wrap your mind around the concept that's being presented. And so I don't know if it would be appropriate in this format or not, since this is just a general discussion. The owner is, or the potential owner is on the call, if you'd like to get his take on his business plan and how he sees this thing operating and what it would consider your framework.
Well, if he had something to say, that was a good time.
I appreciate it, Mr. Chairman, and I apologize in the, in the spirit of Mr. Murphy, just as this call started, the Wi-Fi went out in the place I'm staying in. So I'm sitting in the backseat of a rental car, going off a hotspot. So if I fade out, apologies to everyone. Just to give you some background, we are empty nesters now, and we are definitely dog people. And we have been, as Mrs. Cross taught, caught in trying to travel and having limited opportunities to do so. We came up here several years ago, a good friend of ours stays, lives here in Frankfurt. We came up a couple of years ago to celebrate my 50th birthday and go to Keeneland and really, really enjoyed it, and absolutely fell in love with the area. And, and once we became empty nesters, we wanted to put together something that would both, you know, pay our bills and keep groceries in the fridge, but also be soul satisfying. So the idea of, that piece of property is just beautiful. Its reference to the river is wonderful. Downtown Frankfurt is walkable and enjoyable and, and a great tourist draw. The hike and bike trail that connects Bourbon Trade, Bourbon Trade, Bourbon, excuse me, Buffalo Trace to downtown is just a perfect opportunity to develop this as a short-term rental Airbnb-type atmosphere. The, and the dog kennel is a plus to that. That's the primary focus, is we're trying to attract those, those travelers. The dog kennel is a, is a add-on piece to that, because we've been in that situation. It's not going to be the primary focus of the business. Like, like Jen talked about, we don't anticipate more than about eight dogs being there at one time. We're also going to market towards the people who do work in downtown and maybe want to bring their dog for a day of exercise and fun and not leave them at the house alone. And then the cafe aspect is, again, you're on a beautiful piece of property right there. We envision a deck, you know, you come to pick up your dog, maybe grab a drink and sit on the deck and, and just enjoy the river and watch your dog play in the, in the thing for a little bit before going home. It's, it's a really, really sort of simple, person-forward idea. And again, we're not looking to franchise this or, or turn it into some mega business. This is our second chapter, this is our second chapter deal, and we, it will be our home. So we want to, it will be nice, it'll be attractive, because we need that to market the cabins and so forth. And we're really, really excited about the possibility. And I know it's a different business model. Uh, and we're really, really excited about the possibility. And, and I know it's a different business model, uh, than you guys are probably used, used to looking at. So I appreciate your, uh, your attention to it and, and your, your deep consideration to, to helping our, helping our little plan come, come to fruition. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Thomas. Uh, okay, it, it seems as if we may have exhausted the questions. And, uh, at this point, I'm looking toward, uh, needing adjournment. And I, I have one question that I need to ask, uh, Mr. Logan before we adjourn, unless someone else has something burning that they need to speak about. Seeing none. Mr. Logan, the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee does not have a, uh, quorum of the Planning Commission or either Fiscal Court or the City Commission. It's public meetings is to gather comments and information from the public whenever we meet. Is it required that we advertise our meetings or can we simply list those meetings on the website? And anybody who wishes to attend can attend.
Mr. Jackson, in my opinion, we are performing a, a governmental service, and we should give appropriate notice as if it were a meeting.
Okay. Robert and Eric, guys hear that? That's all I have. Chair, let it take a motion.
Good deal. Most new adjournments.
Thank you. Thank it. Not debatable. See y'all next time.
Bye, bye-bye.